In the civic process, we have our Public Safety Committee meeting tonight, Planning and Public Works, and then our regular Finance Committee meeting at this time. Mr. Pryor, our Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our Public Safety Committee agenda. We have two items. The members of this are Joe Boykin, Henry Darby, and Jenny Costa Heinecker, and myself. And the Chairman sits as ex officio on each committee. So our first item of business is approval of minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Any discussion, deletion, or additions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Before we move to item number two, I want to give space to Deputy Watson to introduce our new EMS director.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Mr. Counsel. I introduce Chief Wayne White of Idaho, Charleston County new EMS chief via Kansas and Idaho. Chief Wayne.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm looking very forward to working with all of you as we jointly serve the citizens of Charleston County. We have bright future ahead of us. Appreciate so far the Administrator Watson's support and obviously Administrator Tooten's support. They've been excellent so far. They've given me all the support and staff we need to get it done. We're going to do bright things in the EMS future for you. So just appreciate the opportunity to be here.
I'll ask you that question in a year from now and see if you got the same answer. Okay. Thank you for coming and glad to be on board.
I'm honored to serve for the opportunity.
You couldn't have picked a better place to come.
Mr. Pryor?
I feel the same way.
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry.
Chairman?
I'm sorry. Want to make sure that you're finished with him.
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I know that this is not a part of the Public Safety Committee, but Mr. Tooten has some additional folks to be at least introduced tonight. May he have a point of personal privilege to do that at this time?
Since we're introducing our new people, sir.
Go right ahead, sir.
We also have a Budget Director who is new. If Mr. Gao would introduce Ms. Perry.
This is Cat Perry. She comes to us from the state of Georgia, literally the state and actually the government there after 30 years of experience there.
Wow.
And Mr. White?
Yes, we have a new HR Director. He's actually from within the county. So Dominique DeSandro is our new Head of HR. He's been with us for almost 15 years now, and he's going to do great things in the future.
Well, all of these applications, we had folks coming in from across the country. This was not a local search on any of these by any means. It was national, I think, and one international.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, item number two is discharge of firearms in the urban and in a incorporated area. But the Sheriff Office has Chief Counsel Eddie Phillips there. I want to give him a couple of minutes to tell us why this is such a good idea, and then we'll take up item number two.
Thank you very much. Edward Phillips, General Counsel for the Charleston County Sheriff's Office. Microphone likes me.
Tell Walt, put in a work on it.
I'm here with Chief.
Williams.
William White. I'd like to thank you to the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Sheriff, and more importantly, would like to thank Natalie Hamm and her staff at the County Attorney's Office in preparing and working diligently on drafting this ordinance. This proposed Charleston County ordinance addresses a legitimate public safety concern in rapid-developing unincorporated areas. The county should proceed with careful consideration of the constitutional implications and ensure that the enforcement guidelines are clearly defined to prevent any subjective application that could inadvertently restrict law gun owners' constitutional rights. While this ordinance includes important protections against governmental overreach, county officials, you should remain aware that the implication of this ordinance focuses strictly on generally reckless behavior rather than creating a burden shift mechanism that presumes the guilt for lawful firearm activities on private property. This measure is not an attack on the Second Amendment rights, but it rather focuses on preventing accidental harm from careless gunfire and to keep the citizens of Charleston County safe. Responsible gun owners who handle firearms safely will find that this ordinance does not affect their activities in any way, as it targets only truly intentional and reckless behavior that would endanger our community. The Charleston County Sheriff remains focused on accidental prevention rather than creating additional regulations or attempting to confiscate firearms. This approach demonstrates to gun owners and local government our ability to collaborate effectively for community safety. While protecting constitutional rights, the ordinance represents a balanced response that respects both public safety, concerns, and Second Amendment protections in Charleston County that's an ever-evolving residential landscape. On behalf of the Sheriff, he apologizes that he's not here today to speak on behalf of this. Thank you for all of your services, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Any questions for the gentlemen? Okay, now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now we move to two-way. What is the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Heinecker, approved by your Chair. Any discussion or deletion?
Yeah, what is the...
Recommendation would be to approve this. Mr. Chairman, would you add up to third reading?
Up to third reading.
Yes. Yes, I was seconded.
Am I misinterpreting what the Sheriff is on the saying? That it should be as it is, or there change needs to be because that I hear in substance or in fact that until there is recklessness, there should be no change. Am I hearing that correctly?
I think it was changed 100 feet within a building.
Already?
Yes. Within the urban growth boundary.
No.
Mr. Boykin?
No, so this applies across all of Charleston County, and it basically disallows someone to discharge a firearm within 100 feet of occupied house or school or church or other type building without that person's permission. And it's just, it's a prohibition against that, you know, and this is going to primarily impact the urban areas where the houses are close together, and we have the situation that we've been dealing with in all these unincorporated urban areas where somebody is shooting literally, you know, next door to someone else's house or next to a daycare, but because they're on county jurisdiction property, the municipalities can't, you know, enforce anything. So it creates a burden for law enforcement and a burden for the folks that have to live like that.
Got it.
And so my objection initially was that the original recommendation, or I think it was a recommendation, it just happened to be in the first draft, was 1,000 feet, and that was way too long of a distance for me for the rural areas. But 100 feet is absolutely reasonable, and I think that was a good compromise.
Got you covered, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I wanted to ask the question, 100 feet of any building dwelling structure, except with the express permission of the owner. Ms. Hamm, maybe you can help. If I am the owner, and I am still within that proximity, and I give myself permission to do it, then who is to say that anybody should come and say anything to me and try to enforce this kind of... Because I think based on the church, is the person the owner, and would they still be able to do exactly what they're doing, target practice, et cetera, if they are the property owners?
I think I'm a bit confused about your question. Are there two structures that you're talking about? You as the owner of one, and then your neighbor is 100 feet away, or...
Right. So I'm the owner, and I have neighbors that are 100 feet or less than 100 feet away from me, and I give myself permission to do target practice any time of day.
No, this requires permission of your, the structure owner, or the one that's within the 100 feet.
Got it. Okay. Of such buildings, so the occupants would have to then agree to allow you to do that.
That is correct. And if that change needs to be made, I will make that, if you want to make that a part of the motion. That should be what it says?
It is, it's in there, but I wanted to kind of make that emphatic, that that's the understanding.
That is the understanding.
And not me, myself, giving me, giving me the permission to do that on my own.
That is not the structure of this. It's for permission by the owner of the structure that is within 100 feet of your own property.
So what if Mr. Tooten is the neighbor on the left, and Ms. Salisbury is the neighbor on the right, and he told me, sure, go on and do it, you know, I have no problems, and I got permission from him, but I didn't get permission from her?
If they're both within 100 feet, then you would not be authorized to act under this ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Boykin?
And I also wanted to point out that this in no way infringes on anyone's rights to own, possess, keep firearms, and also to use those firearms for personal defense and other excluded activities. So this is strictly an enforcement of the conduct, the discharging of the gun within, you know, 100 feet of a building, which is just commonsensical.
Any other council member before we move forward? Mr. Moody?
Thank you. Not on the committee, but I appreciate it, Mr. Pryor, you agending this item again. I also wanted to thank, I thought Reverend Bruce came here last week, and some neighbors made a pretty compelling argument. It's scary stuff. Within these urban areas, you've got schools and daycares and things like that. These kids are out playing on the playground, and somebody's shooting a gun. They've got to lock down a day school in the middle of an urban area. That's, that's just, that's just scary. And so I think we're just trying to make this ordinance so that it matches the neighboring municipalities, so it's all homogenous, if you will. You can't shoot a gun in a neighborhood in Mount Pleasant or Charleston or Charleston, so you shouldn't be able to in the donut holes of Charleston County. I think this makes that very contiguous. So I appreciate this council's continuing dialogue about this, and I appreciate up to third reading, too, as there's additional tweaks that may be considered. Thank you.
Ms. Heinecker?
Yeah, and I also wanted to say thank you to the Sheriff's Office for weighing in on this. That was of great concern to me, because obviously, a rule that we implement is only as good as its enforcement. So we want to make sure if there's anything else we can do to tweak that enforceability on your end to help enforce this, please let us know. But this is, this is really about common sense. When neighbors come out with a legitimate concern like this, it is our responsibility to respond in a reasonable and appropriate manner, and I think this is a good compromise that's been reached.
Okay. All right, ain't no other. All members on the committee in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, that concludes our Public Safety Committee agenda. Now we're going to move right into our Planning and Public Works Committee, where all council members participate. I'm the Chairman of that committee. Item number one is approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
August 14th, 20...
Second.
All right, 22nd, I mean. Let's remove and do it seconded. Any discussion, deletions, or additions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Item two A is amendments to Charleston County zoning.
Move for staff recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify. Mr. Boykin?
Clarity on what we're voting on this painting?
You need clarity? Okay.
I was asking, is this about the motion I was going to make, or is this about the...
I don't believe so. This is something else that they brought up for land development. But if you want to ask Joe to explain it to you.
These are the tax amendments that were created by staff. I think it's the next item.
Can slash is what you look for.
Okay, got you, okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Item number two B, ACP 06-2500125 Slant Cash Road, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request, which is an upzoning. What is the pleasure of this body?
To oppose?
Disapprove.
Disapprove.
Second. Second by the Chairman. Any discussion, deletion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Boykin, I think you wanted to amend something?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on?
Yes, sir, if I may. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to amend the Zeldar to address infrastructure in the approval criteria for rezonings, plan developments, Zeldar amendments, and comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion in this motion? Mr. Moody?
Thank Mr. Boykin for bringing this forward. He and I were speaking, and I wanted to make sure we understood that infrastructure means drainage, roads, whatever else.
Right.
It's not just in and out, that it kind of holistically includes infrastructure.
Yes, and I'd also add to that, getting the Sheriff's Department involved when it comes to traffic, you know, maybe if you need signalized lights, they can make recommendations as well, because when you build these subdivisions, you know, they were normally built for just a small amount of traffic. But when this thing goes up, I think they need to have some kind of way in it, if that's okay.
And in this case, we just went through, when staff has the, well, the next one, I guess, when they have to make a recommendation, you know, they weren't allowed to consider those factors.
Right.
And so that, you know, they should be able to look at everything and look at it comprehensively when they, in their research and weighing in on it.
All right. Item two C?
This is the discussion.
Prowsky?
Are we voting on it?
So I understand, is this like a motion to defer it for them to consider it?
No, no, no. This is, this is a directive to staff to come back with an amendment to give them this ability to research and look at transportation, traffic congestion, intersections, all those types of things, as well as stormwater and other issues in their evaluation, whether they would recommend approval or disapproval.
I would agree with what you're saying. I just want to make sure that by voting so, we're turning down what they're saying now until they come back with the considerations?
No, no. Those are two separate matters.
Okay.
So this is going to be an amendment to the Zeldars to allow them to do the research that they're, that they're not allowed to consider at this point. That's a separate matter than the matter of the upzoning of Canes Slash.
Okay. Mr. Wormin?
Well, I think, I think it's been clarified by Mr. Boykin's comments, you know, this is a separate item, and in fact, I think, sort of explains, and I'm also thankful for what I think is also a common sense change for us to be making here, that kind of helps explain what I think is maybe a blind spot or an inconsistency in, in the comp plan. You know, I, and I think, don't want to speak for everybody, but I think a lot of folks up here do recognize a need for, you know, some zoning reform and even relaxing some zoning within the urban growth boundary. But because the comp plan did not account for these more nuanced issues, we wind up with recommendations based purely on the fact that it's within the urban growth boundary, that I think staff with more flexibility would be able to address those nuances and say, you know, yes, this is in the urban growth boundary, but that doesn't per se mean it's appropriate for an upzoning. And I think, you know, that's all we're trying to do. This does not, by any stretch of the imagination, as far as I can tell, give an opportunity to revisit the upzoning that we just voted down, so.
Okay. So Mr. Boykin made a motion on that, and who seconded it? Mr. Moody seconded it. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And let's be clear, this is not stop the developer from, by right, doing whatever is properly zoned for now. Okay, we just said, no, you're not going to increase the density by 50 or 60 percent, but whatever is zoned for now, the developer has a right to do that. Just want to make that clear.
And Mr. Pryor, if I may add, I mean, you know, this is not, I guess when the Zeldar was originally written, it kind of looked at everything being static, but this is fluid, and things change as time passes. And so, you know, when John's Island was first starting to be developed, the roads were adequate. Now they're not. They're far from it. Matter of fact, I think that the big intersection at River and Maybank is an F asterisk, which I didn't know you could get worse than F, but apparently you can on John's Island. And so this isn't a forever thing. If we get the infrastructure in place and we can support it, then, you know, they could come back, you know, in a future time. But I think the staff really deserves that opportunity to take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, item two C. Has that been addressed? Sorry, this is a, we need to address this as well, too. That was addressed in his motion. All right, two C, ZLDR, yeah, this is a different partial. 625-00134 Canes Slash Road, ZLDR. What is the pleasure?
Move to disapprove.
Second.
Second by Ms. Heinecker. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Adam Carr is unanimously... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our Planning and Public Works Committee agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor, for the excellent way in which you led both those committees. We're now moving into our Finance Committee, where all members of council are part of the Finance Committee. Item one.
Move to approve.
Target.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We have a presentation coming from our consultants, Chernoff Newman, Ryan Brown, Vice President for Public Affairs, and Peter Lamott, President of Strategic Communications, at this time.
Thank you for your time this afternoon, council members. As mentioned, my name is Peter Lamott. I'm President Chernoff Newman and a resident here in Charleston County. I'm joined by my colleagues Ryan Brown, Rick Silver, and Alexis Schobert. Council members, over the next year, Charleston County and its citizens are going to face monumental decision on our future and our quality of life, the decision of where we're headed. Over the past 20 years, Charleston County voters have twice approved the Transportation Sales Tax, making historic investments in infrastructure improvements, critical support for our area's growth, expansion of public transportation, expanded green spaces, and quality of life for our residents. We now face another pivotal decision about the future of transportation in Charleston County. Recently, you tasked staff to work with us to develop a clear process and path forward in that to create a framework to inform both you, the council, and the community on past progress, current and future needs, and the available resources and challenges that we're going to face. We believe that this process must be transparent and must ensure the following two things: ample community input and engagement, and clear communications of facts and choices. So these facts, which are going to guide us as we consider our next steps, are not meant to influence a decision, but to inform and educate. Today, we're going to take a look at a high level back on the investments and milestones that have gotten us here. The goal is to create a common starting place so that we can collectively, both council and the community, determine the best next steps, and in turn, the best choice for Charleston County. So today, as a first step, we're going to present an overview of the report. Now, all of you have the full report with you, but today's the overview. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Peter, and good evening, Mr. Chair, members of council. As Peter mentioned in front of you, you have a nice, pretty printed copy of the, of the report. It's designed to give a big-picture overview of the historic accomplishments by the Charleston County Transportation Sales Tax Program. And further, it's designed to be a resource and reference for council, community, and residents, both longtime and newly arrived, to understand the scope of what this program has delivered and continues to provide for the county and the surrounding region. So as we review it, I'm going to draw your attention to several points that demonstrate the impact, the challenges that we all face, and the opportunities that lie ahead. So, starting off, for two voter-approved referendums, the sales tax is on track to collect $3.4 billion in dedicated infrastructure funding. Because of this, because this funding mechanism exists, so by virtue of just having this in place, you've been able to leverage an additional $1.17 billion in state and federal matching funds, and that creates a number here in front of you, a total of $4.56 billion in infrastructure investment. It's not just a number on paper. It's a big number. It represents here the county's ability to tackle complex, long-term transportation needs that would otherwise be impossible. So roughly 30% of this revenue, as generally accepted, is generated by outside visitors, non-residents. So when we include those matching funds that I just referenced, the $1.17 billion, roughly 48% of all program funding originates from outside of Charleston County, so demonstrating an ROI on your investment. Nearly half, 48%, of every dollar, is therefore paid by non-residents and allows you all to capitalize on tourism and outside investment to benefit the residents that you serve. As you all know, over the life of this program, which dates back to 2004, this county has changed drastically. This region has changed drastically. And so these next set of stats are going to share just, just how much you've grown and some of the opportunities, we'll call them, that lie ahead. So since 2004, the county's population has grown more than 33%. And while in the broader tri-county region, if you include Berkeley and Dorchester, that's 50% growth. And as you all know, many of the folks that live outside of St. Charleston come here for work, education, recreational activities, adding additional pressures on your infrastructure. Registered vehicles have increased 41%. And latest projections indicate that over 42,000 people will move here in the next 10 years. And as you can imagine, in that broader tri-county region, it's even higher. So these pick, these numbers tell a clear story. It's, it's helped you keep growth. It's a key tool to doing that, and it's also a key tool as you look ahead, look and plan ahead. Every new resident, as you well know, every additional commuter and every additional vehicle adds pressure, roads, bridges, transit system, and also taking up space that, you know, quite frankly, you might not always have. So, how do we break this down? As you see here, this is across the 20 years and the two programs, the rough, with the best data we have available, how, how, how those three programs become a piece of a, of half the pie, we'll say. Not, not a full penny, half a penny. So 62% total funding has been dedicated to infrastructure, supporting nearly 1,000 miles of road improvements, new bike lanes, pedestrian pathways, along with dozens of major intersection upgrades, parkways, and interchanges that help reduce congestion, improve safety. One that keeps coming back to top of mind that a lot of people forget about, the iconic Arthur Ravanel Bridge, which everyone associates certainly with Charleston and the Low Country, but I would argue the entire state, was also supported with Transportation Sales Tax Fund. So it has, it's done some great things, not only for this county and this region, but also the state as a whole. The Green Belt Program, 13% of TST funds support the Green Belt Program, which safeguards over 284,000 acres of green space, covering roughly half of the county, which is quite impressive when you think about just the amount of people that live here and the growth over, over the past 20 years. And that's the second-highest percentage of county preserved land in all of South Carolina. So truly, really remarkable when you think about just how big this greater metropolitan area is. So that, as you know, ensures that as the community grows, you're retaining those natural spaces that people love and old dear here in Charleston, that help enhance quality of life and protect the environment. In terms of public transit, 25% of TST funds have gone to enabling really the public transit system, the CARDA, and the Rapid Transit as well. 66 million passengerships and over a 226% increase in service miles since 2005, which is quite a lot of miles. And that also includes growing the bus fleet, adding benches, and technology enhancements as well. So that improves accessibility for workers, students, visitors, and residents So back to, getting back to what, what Peter shared at the start, this report, it's a big-picture report. It's not every single detail, but we think by highlighting past accomplishments and where you've been, it helps provide a foundation for where you're going in the future. So we know there's many opinions and priorities, very diverse needs, even amongst the council members. It's essential that you communicate these facts, that you're grounded in these facts about the current program, and that you tell that story while simultaneously considering what comes next. So, we encourage you to use this report as a tool for engaging citizens, for engaging the municipalities that you serve, and other key stakeholders. We believe that if used in consultation with, as you plan for the future, it'll help foster transparency that Peter spoke about, and we know is so important, collaboration, and ensuring the next phase of transportation investments reflects the values and priorities to the people that you all serve. A little bit about this report, it's going to be, it's not going to be, it's available to you, obviously, in front of you here. We've also created a, what I'll call a hub of information. Right now, it just contains the report, but we're going to continue to build off of it. That's accessible at charlestontransportation.com. We'll be adding, adding to that about current, future, and past projects. We'll share, very similar today, this presentation, that other upcoming meetings, certainly, as you all may have some in, in the districts that you serve, going out with us and staff and bringing this information. us and staff and, and bringing this information to them. We'll be sharing this on social media, newsletters, um, and other county communication channels to make sure we're reaching a, a broad audience. So in conclusion, uh, thank you all. You know, you really formalized something that we had already planned, and I, I think it was a very smart move by council to do so. Uh, we think it provides a solid fan, uh, foundation for the future, um, and we're looking forward to, to working with you all and carrying that out, um, whatever you decide comes next. So with that, uh, I'll stop, and Peter and I and the rest of our team will be happy to address any questions that you all may have.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Brown. Uh, at this time, as the Chair of Charleston County Council, I would like to direct the consultants to, and continue to engage with the community, collecting feedback from all corners of the county, and bringing their findings back to council. Today, I'm announcing the establishment of a new Transportation Sales Tax Standing Committee, of which all of county council will be, um, members, or nine members of that county, of county council will be members of that Transportation Sales Tax Standing Committee. This will ensure that the wor- important work related to the TST program is done publicly and with accountability. It will also dedicate the time and focus needed for council to carefully consider the future of this program and its impact on the residents of Charleston County. The newly established Standing Committee will hold its first meeting on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. During that meeting, the former South Carolina Department of Transportation Secretary, Kristi Hall, will guide a discussion with the goal of establishing a preliminary framework of investment area priorities for a future Transportation Sales Tax Program. And so thank you again, we received the report, and we look forward, uh, to continue to work, and certainly, uh, holding the first meeting of this Standing Committee on September twenty fifth. Uh, council members, do you have any questions?
All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, item three, the consent agenda, three A, Violence Against Women Act.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I would just like to ask, um, uh, any of these matching grants, do we need match for any of these grants?
Say, say that again?
No, 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 not you.
Oh.
Whole difference.
What I'm saying, does any of these grant require us hiring people after it's over? That's what I'm talking about.
That's a different concept, so that's not matching.
They always tell us, uh, that we're FTE.
Either or, it's either or, 'cause some of these things, when the grant goes away, then we require you to.
Right.
Fund it up to so many years, so that's why I'm asking now, is, you know, and maybe they can have an answer by Tuesday, we just move it on to Tuesday?
Yeah, this is coming from the solicitor, two of them, and the sheriff.
And the sheriff. So if someone can have those answers by us by Tuesday, let's just move it along to Tuesday. Matt?
Uh, these do not continue services after that. That's a little bit different from, uh, requiring a match. Some of them do have a smaller match that may be needed during the term of the grant. The solicitor is having some challenges with her two grants, 'cause the dollar amounts aren't going up, and she's still trying to stretch that for the same number of personnel. There may be some, um, use of the general fund to supplement that, but there's no requirement to maintain the positions after the grants end.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, three A.
Move for approval, A through D.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Uh, item four, four A.
Yes. I just had to just be brought back to council, because I know we have some very good employees that doesn't, you know, meet full-time requirements, but they still show up when we ask them to, and so I think Mr. Goult has figured out a way to do this without increasing the number that we already have, and any shortfall, if there's any, would come out of council contingency, and I think it's anywhere from three to five thousand dollars, Matt, what it might be?
Um, the motion, I think we wrote, was up to twenty five thousand, we're not to the precise number yet. We think we got it mostly within what was previously allocated, but we think there might be a little bit higher, um, that we need council's assistance for.
Okay, so I would move that we approve this, and, um, take care of those who take care of us.
All right, it's been properly moved.
Discussion.
Second.
Is, and seconded, all right, discussion, Mr. Sass.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I had a question, um, part-time and temporary employees. I understand that, I know we have some, um, um, but I mean, does that mean if somebody's, what, there must be some definition of what a part-time or a temporary employee is. Does that mean somebody comes to work once a week, or once a month if we ask them? Or is there some, is there some cutoff on this, Matt? Are y'all looking at that? How is that gonna be handled?
We looked at the same period of time that we use for the full-time positions, so if they were employed for all of fiscal year twenty five, and they were still currently employed, they're eligible for half of what the full-time employees received, the thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, as far as coming up with definitions, you could ask, uh, ten people and get slightly different answers from all ten, so I don't want to really, um, delve into that, but they are not working, uh, usually full-time schedules.
Okay, thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, Wermin?
I, I just wanted to, I mean, I, this is probably on the agenda online, but I, I just want to make clear that this does not include a, a list of folks who, um, I won't read the whole list, but I just want to make very clear that this does not include county council members, um, board members, or, or a number of other sort of similar positions, so I, I just kind of want that on the record.
Yes.
I, I certainly, you know, understand that, that just by the nature of, of how we work, there are folks who are contributing greatly to the county, who, who are under maybe what is necessarily a full-time threshold, and, and I think if they can get half of what the full-time folks get, um, and they've obviously been here by definition through, you know, over a year, um, I'm, I'm happy to support this, but I guess I just wanted to put that out there, that we're not including a number of categories, most importantly, the folks up here, so.
All right, Ms. Honeycutt.
I just wanted to ask what the balance of county contingency is if we expend that twenty five. Do we know that number? Yep, just for Tuesday.
Yeah, we use like five thousand, yeah.
Ten thousand so far.
Yeah. All right, uh, Mr. Wa- uh, Kowalski, I'm sorry.
How many of these employees are there? The number of them, maybe I missed the, did we?
I, I think it was, we can get you that before, um, Tuesday. I, I think it was somewhere between a hundred and definitely less than two hundred. Don't remember off the top of my head what that number is.
The cost would be twenty five thousand?
No, there was some, um, under, uh, budget amount for the, uh, the full-time. So the four point two million, uh, we used some of the savings from that on the, the first round of bonuses, and applied that to the temporaries and part-time. So, um, I was just provided the number, a hundred and twenty four employees fall in this category for the part-time and temporaries.
Stand in layman's terms. Would this cost, there must be a cost to it, that if we didn't do this.
A hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. You got a hundred and twenty four employees.
I thought you said a hundred and twenty four employees.
A thousand dollars a piece.
Okay, so.
There's, there's a little bit that we have to pay, um, to match our social security and Medicare. So it's a little higher than that, but yes.
Twenty four thousand, and, you know, I don't, I may be alone in this, but I, I don't feel as disrespectful to say, when you pay a man or woman to do a job, that's, I'd rather put the hundred and twenty four thousand back to taxpayers, or to put it towards contingency for, you know, disaster relief, or, I, I just don't feel that it's using, you know, taxpayers' monies, the, the hundred and twenty four thousand. I would say no, but thank you for, those are my reasons.
Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Goult, I just want to thank y'all for working so very hard to, uh, I guess, work this wrinkle, as they call it, and being able to accommodate those other employees, uh, and still come pretty much right into the original budget, so that was some, some great work, thank you.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Chairman. I might ask, I would maybe position the issue, maybe to Mr. Kowalski to think about it this way. What is the cost to the county of losing employees, having to advertise for those openings, having to retrain for those openings, having to get that employee up to speed? And I'm not looking for an answer, I just, I'm just theoretic, theorizing here. Get that employee up to speed, I would, I would submit that the cost is probably well in addition, well in, well over a thousand dollars, or even two thousand dollars, uh, in lost production time, uh, efficiency, and that sort of thing, so if we, even if we keep five employees, I think this number makes it worth, makes it a good investment by the taxpayers, makes it a very beneficial investment by the taxpayers to keep these folks. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Darby?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, this is basically a, perhaps a perspective for the administrator. I realize that the security here is privatized, and I'm just wondering, is there any type of, uh, an amicable pressure to bear, where that company could assist, uh, in terms of our security workers, because they too work extremely hard, and they have the safeguards and protect us, so I'm just wondering, I don't realize it's privatized or whatnot, but you have the answer now, sir, of this.
It's a contracted amount, sir, it's, I'd have to defer to the entire, there's nothing I can do on a contract.
Yes, sir. And that's why I said.
Until it's up for renewal.
And that's why I use the term amica, but of course, we can't make, but I was just saying this to have a conversation, uh, to see what they could do, uh, in terms of the employees, sir. The, the only thing, either yes or no, so I'm just, just wondering, sir.
All right?
Aye.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay? All right, the ayes have it. Good night.